At this time, I will turn it over to Mr. Carter.
At this time, as we have been beginning off our meeting, I would like to ask Byron Pierce to come up. Mr. Pierce, and I'd like to, and we'll talk about him in a minute, but this is a state champion wrestler, and very proud to have him here. We're going to ask him to leave some prayers for his good standing.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Byron. Mr. Chrisby, would you care to share our mission, vision, or values?
Yes, our mission statement is the ultimate educational experience for every child every day. Our vision is an innovative school district focused on learning without boundaries. Our core values are integrity, leadership, commitment, and service.
Thank you. We have some groups to recognize tonight, and I want to turn it over to Mr. Brown, high school principal, to talk about the Johnson County High School wrestling.
Well, Coach Manning is here, and I don't, he's going to have a whole lot more to say than I do, but you know, I can, I can say that of the many amazing programs we've got going on at the high school, there's, there's one that has clearly probably stood above all of them as we've won their shirtset, which I didn't get one of them, I like to, I like to have one of those shirts, those are awesome, big X on it, 10 in a row. For a program to win 10 consecutive regional championships in any, any sport, any level is a pretty amazing accomplishment, but 10 consecutive, and the number of state champions we've had along the way has been amazing, and if you've never had a chance to go to one of those, it's a, it's a pretty neat experience to get to go in there to a state wrestling championship, and the atmosphere is, is pretty awesome, so a huge accomplishment. But I'm telling you, wrestling is just, it takes a lot more grit than I, that's the hardest sport that I've ever watched anybody participate in, and I think it takes just a lot of grit. And so I'm just going to turn that over to you, you can talk about the accomplishments this year.
Thank you very much. Very fortunate this year in that we did win our 10th regional championship in a row, and that's something that our only senior and captain, Blake Gamble, reminded us of often. We did have only one senior this year, so the future looks bright. Blake was an All-Stater this year, and beat one state champion. This is a heck of a draw when you go down there and you're ranked number two in the state, and you've got to beat one state champion to get into the semifinals, and then he wrestled another state champion in the semi, in the semifinals, and unfortunately, we didn't come out and win the match, but then he tore a little bit of a meniscus tear for him there in the semifinals. So, but he ended up obviously an All-State Wrestler. We had seven, I think, All-State Wrestlers this year, which I believe is a record for us. Also, considering the fact that we had Joe Jackson, who was the state runner-up returning this year, who had an injury in football, and so Lord knows, had we had Joe's, another state runner-up, possibly a state championship, what we would have had this year. But you know, I'm prejudiced towards a sport of wrestling. I always say that it's one sport that any kid from the mountains can do. I've taken kids off the basketball team, and they've been successful in wrestling, and we take soccer players, and they're successful. It's just that this is one sport that almost every child in the mountains can do. Also, you can be any size, short, tall, big and round like the coach, you can be 103 pounds. As a matter of fact, we have an 80-pounder this year, who is an All-American youth wrestler. But we had a great year, we had a state champion from Flat Gap. Where is Byron? There he is, Byron, if you'd stand up. Our school since its existence has had nine state champions, I believe, and eight of them have been in wrestling. We've had one golf state champion, eight wrestling state champions, and so it just goes to show you that wrestling and kids from Johnson County really, really goes together. Our 10 regional championships have been against teams from Ashland, Harrison County, Centiana, of course, Wayne County, McCreary, Whitley County, it's been all over the east, and so we've had a pretty good dominant run, Lord willing, will continue to do that. We have, how many All-Staters that are here? You want to stand up here if you can? We'll get him up here. We're worried about our catcher here. I encourage our Jake, you want to stand up there too? All right, we've got two more of our All-Staters here, and of course you can see Byron, if you'll stand up beside Jake, Jake's 105 pounds soaking wet, 104 pounds, so Byron is 285 pounds, so it gives kids of all opportunities. Our youth, the Johnson County youth won the state championship last year, have seven youth champions, our middle school was state runners-up, and, and I can't tell you how proud of our kids I am. Now, I want you to understand something, there's a couple of programs in the state that have multimillionaires, I understand one is a billionaire behind their program. So for a kid to walk out of the mountains and compete with the programs that they compete with is an incredible thing. They take these kids all over the country, they get the best training, the best coaches, they go to camps everywhere, and I don't know, mountain kids can find a way to overcome that. So we're very proud of them, I could go on, but that's all I got to say about that.
Can we get a picture of all of you? All of you, this rest will come up here, let's get a picture of all of you and just hear what.
Do you care to announce their names?
Absolutely.
All the ones that are here, we need to recite all of them, because they all did a great job down there.
I'll have him just to start down here on the end. This one of our big sophomores, he had to wrestle with Byron all year long, so he's the guy that got thrown around by the state. By the way, the state champion was 50 and 0 going into the finals match, if you all saw that. 6'4", 280 pounds of steel, and our little Byron beat him. He was from Dixie Heights, Northern Kentucky. But go ahead and introduce your names, start down at the end.
Brayden Castle.
Nick Stable.
Give your grade, two guys.
Sophomore.
Freshman.
Matthew Fradlin.
Travis Mann.
Jacob Kane, 8th grade.
Byron Pierce, Jr.
Michael Williams, senior.
Rodriguez, 8th grader.
Will Dorton, 8th grader.
By the way, Levon Rodriguez, 8th grader, had the state champion who won the state from Walton Brona, who has signed a full ride to West Point, he had him on his back, flat as a flitter, as we like to say around here, for 10 seconds, and they wouldn't call the pin, and I'm sure everybody in the stadium was in shock as our 8th grader had the state champion pinned, but that happens sometimes.
Coach, thank you for all that you've done. Every Johnson County student deserves to be taught by an accomplished teacher. National Board Certification was designed to develop, retain, and recognize accomplished teachers and to generate ongoing improvement in schools across the nation. It's among the most respected professional certificates available in K-12 education. Studies have also found the positive impact of having a National Board Certified Teacher is even greater for minority and low-income students. Johnson County has had several MBCTs move on to serve not only as school and district administrators, but also to serve within the Kentucky Department of Education. National Board Certification is a public assurance that teachers have met the profession's highest standards for accomplished practice. It also signifies that teachers are up to date on the knowledge and best practice in their certification area. To achieve National Board Certification, participants devote many, many hours of their spare time to classwork and pass score requirements to demonstrate their knowledge and skills in their certification area. As superintendent, I'm proud to introduce Johnson County's current National Board Certified Teachers, and I originally was going to do just the four new, then I thought that it would be appropriate and, and well-deserved to introduce all of our district National Board Certified Teachers. Not all of them are with us tonight, because some of them had prior engagements, but I do like to, I would like to announce everyone, and as I announce your name, please stand up and then come on up here, I'd like to get a picture with you both, with the Board of Education. First, working on an MOA through CAVEB, one of our teachers that, that was at Central Elementary for years, Ms. Pam Sloan. At Johnson County Middle School, we have Ms. Stephanie Moore, I'm not sure if she's here, and Dr. Rachel Holbrook.
Yeah, let's come out on.
Ms. Cochran, Pam Sloan, mother of the All-State Wrestler.
Yeah, there you go, there you go. At Central Elementary, the National Board Certified Teacher who already had hers was Ms. Charlene Owens. And Ms. Jerry Van Hoos. At Johnson Central High School, Ms. Amanda Ratliff, and Ms. Reba Sloane. At Highland Elementary, Ms. Carolyn Farrell, and Ms. Karen Fife. At Porter Elementary, Ms. Deborah Mactney. And then our new, our teachers who are newly certified in National Boards, from Central Elementary, Ms. Tanya Holbrook. From Johnson Central High School, Mr. Matt Cantrell. From WR Castle, Ms. Casey Sayers. And from Highland Elementary, Ms. Tamika Goble. Ladies, thank you all for your time, your dedication, and your service to the students at Johnson County. We are very much appreciative. You all are welcome to stay, but you're pleased to leave, like to leave. Thank you for coming. And now, moving on to our monthly Golden Eagle Award. As, as we talk about each month, we nominate, we have many people nominated in classified side and certified side who go above and beyond and are deserving of Golden Eagle Award. Let me remind you that the award that these people receive are created by the engineering team, the students at Johnson Central High School, they use a 3D printer to make the eagle, and then the art department does the painting, and the base is given to us, provided by Castle Jewelry, and they are our sponsor each month for the Golden Eagle Award. The first person, the classified person, is said to be the perfect example of once a tomcat, always a tomcat. She has been an aide at WR Castle for 29 years, and attended the school as a student. She probably now knows who it is and why she's here. She helps keep WR Castle Elementary operating smoothly, she assists in the kitchen during both breakfast and lunch, and in between those shifts, she personally calls each student who is absent. After lunch duty, she manages snack time, always making certain three snack items are available to students who cannot afford their own. Her last task of the day is to supervise bus duty, where she waves to the students as they leave. Ms. Nancy is the first and last smile that many students see each day at school. Along the way, she can be found sharing life lessons with students. Well-deserving of the Golden Eagle Award, Ms. Nancy's statement. dependable, role model. Some of the words used describe this teacher. She performs her professional responsibilities with a smile and a contagious demeanor that grows on others. She makes an effort to make everyone feel special, especially the staff, whether it's by bringing them their favorite coffee, or throwing together a special lunch for their birthday. One of the many titles she carries is curriculum coach. Other teachers often seek her out if they need help with an issue. She also provides RTI, STEM lab, coaches the boys' basketball team, and in her spare time serves on several school committees. All this, and she doesn't let pregnancy slow her down. Congratulations to Ms. Selena Cochran, her certification and shipping of the Golden Eagle Award.
She our first Hall of Fame man to Golden Eagle.
She has thoroughly examined the agenda, I'll tell you.
Next on the agenda, I'd like to get approval of the best from January 27, 2018, February meeting, bills and payroll due February the 22, 2018. Is there a motion to do so? Motion's made, is there a second? Motion made, is there any discussion? If there'll be no discussion, call for a vote, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item 5A, Mr. Adams.
After having typical conversations with myself, Mr. Cochran, Kevin Cheeks, Mr. Terma Carter-Barnhart, and Kentucky Department of Education, we have discovered that inadvertently, somewhere along the line, one of our schools was left off the facilities plan. So, we're asking you to rescind this motion, because we now have to talk about two schools instead of one. So, I recommend that we rescind this, this motion to make a, request a finding to our DFP at this time.
Thank you, is there a motion? Second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item 5B, Mr. Adams.
Now, since we've made that motion, I also ask that you make another motion, that we reconvene our district facilities plan committee, so that we can discuss several changes needed to the DFP, so, and upon further conversation with Kevin Cheeks, our architect, and Greg Numbar at KDE, he feels the same way, so instead of a finding, we now need to go in and make an amendment to our DFP, so I ask now that you reconvene the local planning committee to do that.
Thank you, is there a motion to do so? Second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Adams. 5C, Mr. Adams.
I also recommend that you go ahead and make the payment, that'll be installment number six for our performance contract. At this time, I'm going to let Trevor tell you a little bit about what's going on, but when he gets finished, I do recommend that we make this payment.
So, as you're probably aware, pod number three's been completed at Johnson Central Elementary. Phase two of the bathrooms is going well, the second floor's been released for use, and the first floor will be released next week. The lighting across the district is substantially completed in almost every school, with some isolated areas and fixtures still to be installed at certain schools, along with several exterior fixtures. Our last main objective is to finish controls. Central Elementary is now controlled properly, still working on the web interface to allow the district to see how that school is looking. Johnson Central High School is substantially complete as well, along with integration in progress at Highlands Elementary. So those are the schools that are currently done, are almost in progress, and we're moving on to remaining schools after that.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the pay application per Mr. Adams?
Motion approved.
Second? Any discussion? If there'll be none, we'll call for a vote, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. 5D, Mr. Adams.
This will be the installment for the lighting that was purchased in December for performance contract. This will take care of probably 99% of the lighting for this project, so we do have, we do have all that in the shop, and what's not been installed, it is in the shop, so I do recommend that we pay this, payment at this time.
Thank you, is there a motion to approve? Second? Any discussion? No discussion, we'll call for a vote, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item 6A.
Yes, late last summer, you guys approved a program for Johnson County to use in kindergarten through 8th grade called Exact Path. And this program, it actually puts students on their exact path based on their performance on diagnostic assessments. We needed a diagnostic, we didn't have, well, all we had was our end-of-the-year test, and so we needed something at the beginning of the year, and then something at the end of the year, and this program actually gives us an assessment in the middle of the year as well. And it assesses language arts, reading, and math. And the results have been very good, and I wanted to just share a little bit with those with you today, but also the Department of Education mandated that we have something in our district that would measure if students needed interventions or enrichment, and this is a proof positive that it really guides the pathway for students to, as they perform on the diagnostic, it increases the level of difficulty on this type of program. So, I'll just come up here and share with you some of the results. From the first diagnostic that we did in August, through the one we just finished up from early December until now, the goal is to decrease the students that are scoring below average, and to increase the ones that are on grade level and above grade level. And so we can see that our bar, our bar is really going down well from below average here, this percentage, it's really going down, and then we can see the students who are on grade, it's going up, and then above grade is going up. And this is an example of just reading, I could give you the example of math, and I could give you the example of language arts, and you would see the same thing. But it's not just in one school, it's in every school. So Mr. Yance, if you want to show us, let's scroll down a little, and we'll get to Flat Gap. What we're seeing at Flat Gap is, at the beginning, 58% of the students were below average, that's to 38%. On-grade was 27, and that's increased to 43, that's a really nice increase. And above, 15% has moved up to 19%. You're going to see a lesser amount here, because again, with the difficulty of this type of diagnostic, if you're a student that's scoring, if you're in 3rd grade, or if you're scoring in the 4th or 5th grade, the questions that you get will be that high, because it does, it really, it really puts a kid on their exact pathway, so that's where you're going to see not as much change on the above. So, let's move to Highland. Below grade level went from 45 down to 26. On-grade went from 34 to 42%, and above grade went from 21 up to 32%, so that's a really nice increase. You can see a little bit of the difference in the number of students, that's going to depend on how the enrollment changes within the school, so it's going to be all five or six kids sometimes, because we have, but the beauty of this is also, if a kid is, a student's at Highland Elementary, but they move to WR Castle Elementary, all they have to do is log right back into it, and they're still on their same pathway. So, and this is all 100% online as well. For the middle school, we had 38% who were below grade average, below average, and that moved down to 32%. On-grade, 29 up to 30, and above grade, 32 to 37, and that was 526 students, so it's a good amount of students. At Porter, we had below grade average at the beginning, 45, that has reduced down to 28. On-grade, 30 to 39%, above grade, 25 up to 33%. At WR Castle, 49% below in the beginning, down to 36%. On-grade, 31 to 38%, and above grade, 20 to 27%. And the last one, Central Elementary, we started out with 64% below grade average, and it's moved down to 47%, 23% to 32 for on-grade, and above grade, 13% up to 21%. So we can definitely see at every single school, there's some, the progress being made. We're finding, this is, it's not easy, this is not easy, and the kids will, sometimes he would say, they get tired of this sometimes, but it is all based 100% on our standards. So, we were very careful when we, the principals, and we met like three times before we even made a decision for this type of product. So, we will no longer be giving a paper pencil test at the end of the year to kindergarten and first and second grade. We're going to continue with this process, but we're also going to be doing this all the way up through 8th grade, and then it leads into what they do at the high school with the coursework and the Plato, so it's all under the same umbrella. So we think we're on to something good, and we will give you another report at the end of the school year when we finish Diagnostic 30. Thanks.
Sean, is that two, is that two separate tests?
It is, it's two separate tests, you generally get, you guys can correct me, I think we started in August, right away with this one, and to test every student, even with the Chrome Books, and that's been real handy, because every kid, that helps out a whole lot. So then, the second one started, I think, right after Thanksgiving, and so then this last one will start about April the 16th. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Cochran.
You should have, do you have a packet with the evaluation materials to conduct my summer evaluation?
Thank you. Next, item 6C.
Two weeks. That be enough time for you all? Is that one for you? Okay. So, two weeks.
6C, Mr. Fairchild.
We're asking the board to approve the participation in 2018 KESDA Youth Bus Sales.
Thank you, is there a motion to approve? Second? Any discussion? If there'll be none, we'll call for a vote, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item 5D, Mr. Burge.
Annually, we need your approval on staffing policies, they order a, a, previous years.
Thank you, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second? Any discussion? If there'll be none, we'll call for a vote, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. 6E, Ms. Pat.
I guess the family resource center directors are currently writing their grants for the next school year, and those are due in on March the 1st, so we need approval for that, and we also, tonight, the judges, and we'll need to sign for them to, to sign, to see that again. I would like to tell you that Family Resource Centers, they have just lost a fourth of their budget, so they took, the state took away their last, the fourth quarter. So for us in Johnson County, that's a $30,000 increase in funds for Family Resource Centers, so they're working really hard to make sure that they include everything in their grants if need be, and that kind of thing, so if you could just approve that, it would be very appreciated.
Thank you, is there a motion to approve? Motion's made, is there a second? Any discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. 6F, Mr. Cochran.
We are asking permission to enter into a contract or agreement with Resource Associates, which is a group that writes grants for the district. It's for the Striving Reader Grant, which we all approved a couple of months ago, and we just want to enter into agreement, the way it's being paid for is the Johnson County Public Library and a couple other groups are paying the way you're paid for them to write the grant for us, and the grant, I think, is for a total of close to $10,000.
Thank you, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second? Any discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. 6G, Mr. Ms. Holmesy, Ms. Dy... Six G, Mr., Ms. Holmsey, Ms. Dyals, and Mr. Young.
We are asking board approval for our spring fundraiser. We will be doing candy sales with Chris Queen.
And I'm representing Mr. Young. And we were gonna do the schoolwide fundraiser also with Chris Queen. We're gonna do the catalog sale.
Thank you, Mr. Dyals.
The same thing, the catalog sale with Chris Queen and also the Cars for Kids fundraiser. I wonder if we're interested in those.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Second? Any discussion? Now, we'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Six H, Mr. Cochran.
We're asking the board to approve the creation of a part-time school grounds monitor position, among other duties. This position will assist with the art shacks, cover them during lunch, and other duties around the main campus.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Second? Any discussion? If there'll be none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Six I, Mr. Crum.
Okay, we got a few trips here. I've got the high school and the middle school got one. I can read all of them here, but you got our art department, we were very honored. We had a student selected as the only person from the whole state to submit a, it's like a flag-type project, and she was accepted. And they're actually paying for her to go to Seattle. And there'll be a person from each state that represented as part of a ceremony there at a national art conference in Seattle. So, it's a pretty big honor. And Ms. LaMash, our art teacher, is gonna accompany her on that. Also, baseball team, they have their trip planned to Vero Beach during spring break. And the softball team is planning a trip to Pigeon Forge. And the middle school academic team is planning to go May eleventh, thirteenth to Chicago to National Quiz Bowl tournament. And I think that's it.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve student trips? Motion's been made. Is there a second? Any discussion? If there'll be none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Six J, Mr. Fairchild.
We're asking the board to approve a little bid on the 2018 position to do our CDF physicals and the pre-impala physicals.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Second? Any discussion? If there'll be none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Six K, Mr. Young and Mr. Crum.
We are asking to, for the board to approve, Hager Hill Free Wilbur Baptist has traditionally used WR Castle's playground for their Easter egg hunt and that falls on Echo first this year.
Thank you, Mr. Crum.
We've got two things. The Chandler Room of Sonic Lodge is wanting to host the district meeting on June ninth. I'll be after schools out at the high school. And Preston'sburg Healthcare is wanting to be able to just use us as a standby disaster emergency status to use the gym for patients in the, in the event of an emergency. They've gotta have a standby location that they can utilize.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Six L, Mr. Sawyer.
He's not here, but he, we have the agreement, we approved the agreement a couple of months ago to be in partnership with the energy manager project. And this pulls the other districts in to use Terry as we share.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Six M, Mr. Young and Mr. Cochran.
Again, representing Mr. Young, we are going to, there's a couple of different places throughout the district who are applying for the Steel Reese Grant. The grant's over thirty thousand dollars. In the past, it's been awarded in our county to fund the renovations to WR Castle's playground. We have had an already digital programming at Highland Elementary in the past. This year, WR Castle is riding it to, to build and install an outdoor water fountain as well as water fountains in other places throughout the building. And we would like to board's approval to apply.
We're actually asking district-wide, several schools have mentioned interest in that. It's due at the end of the week, but also district office, we are writing a grant for Steel Reese as well and hopefully get some funding, of course, some additional trains. And also, KEDC has a couple of grant opportunities that we'd like to participate in, particularly with YCC and with the leadership grants. We're asking your approval for those.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
And there's also, Mr. Crum and Ms. Calabatius have a ground there as well.
We are wanting to apply for the CDC Improving Student Health and Academic Achievement Through Nutrition, Physical Activity, and the Management of Chronic Conditions in Schools grant. That would provide up to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars each year for five years. No matching funds are required. It would implement healthy eating, physical activity, and management of chronic conditions. I think that it would help maybe renovate the weightlifting room and, and things that really are in disrepair if we were to approve that. And you guys don't, you may not know, but Johnson County's ranked seventh in the state in obesity. So, I think that if we worded it properly, we would be able to receive such grant.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Second? Any discussion? If there'll be none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six N, Mr. Yance.
The calendar committee's met several times over the past couple of months and we've built a, two options for the calendar. We put those out to the staff for a vote over the past week. Seventy-three percent of the staff returned option one as their choice, so we recommend that we pick option one as our calendar for the eighteen, nineteen school year. And we'll also be publishing a list of the holidays of nineteen, twenty year for people to plan vacations around and things like that.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve school calendars? Second? Any discussion? If there'll be none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Six O, Ms. Coleman.
And recently, we sought out bids to replace our walk-in refrigeration units at some of our schools as well as replacing some emergency doors to our coolers. We only received one bid there on your tab sheet and we're just asking for approval for that.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Any discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, Mr. Cochran.
We have with us tonight my executive coach for my new superintendent seat, Dr. Fred Carter, and I'm on the term for a week. My name is Fred Carter. I'm an retired school superintendent and I worked for years as deputy secretary of the education cabinet. And following that, I've been employed for the past six years as executive coach for all new superintendents in Kentucky. And there's some, are some interesting statistics with that. In that six years, I've worked with a hundred and sixty-three of the hundred and seventy-three superintendents in Kentucky, which means there's only ten superintendents in Kentucky that have been there longer than six years. So, what that says is, if you get a good one, hang on to them because they're in short supply. As a matter of fact, for next year, we already have twenty-one vacancies for next year. And depending on how the pitching system actually goes, that number may climb. Each new superintendent is required to complete a year of what's called new superintendent training. And they have to complete that successfully to keep their superintendent certification. In the six years I've been doing this, I have a hundred and sixty-three. We've only had one failure. So, he's not gonna be the second. I guarantee that. He's doing a great job. He represents you well from visiting in the district, from touring the schools, and from attending this board meeting tonight. I tell you, it makes you wanna move to Johnson County, is what it does. You guys got a lot of great things going on here, you really do. When I left home this morning, actually about five hours ago, my wife said, "You're going to Johnson County? Is that the same district that has all those strong academic teams and great academics and the same district that we see repeatedly at the state tournament?" And I said, "That's the same one." So, your, your reputation is across the state, doing good things. The new superintendent training, when I came through, it was a paper and pencil type thing. You had to actually take a test on school finance, school, all of those kinds of things. And if you didn't pass them, you had to get tutored a little bit, take them again. And honestly, I took the financing thing with a guy who took it six times and never passed it. And I remember thinking, I don't think I want to be superintendent of my district if I can't pass school finance. So, now it's done differently. Tom actually has to upload information to what's called an e-portfolio. And you guys have access to that and of course, that information's helpful as you do your own evaluation with him. We do an evaluation at the end of the year, which is called a capstone, and he has to successfully do that to pass. And there'll be three people voting on that. I'll be voting, his mentor, Robin Fletcher, will be voting, and of course, Bob Hutcheson, a board chair, is voting on that. So, there's three people voting on that. And he could pass that and fail your own evaluation, or he could fail your evaluation and pass that. Those aren't tied together, those are separate, even though it's judging some of the same things. In addition, I'll visit the district four times throughout the year. This is my third. I came and spent a full day back in the fall. Came for this, came for the ILP team meeting earlier as well, and then I'll be back in late May or early June for his capstone presentation. And that will be a board meeting. So, school board's required to be there, his mentors are required to be there, and I'm required to be there. It's kind of a state of the, state of the district, like the State of the Union or State of the State, but it's a state of the district. Hopefully, he'll talk about those seven school superintendent standards and he'll also talk about, maybe do a little crystal ball game. Here's some challenges for next year, here's some opportunities for next year, that kind of thing. So, it's, it's very positive. And then in addition to those four meetings we have to gather, there's seventeen days gathered throughout the year that we meet for training. And when I say we, I'm talking about he and the other twenty, twenty-one new superintendents in Kentucky. And we usually meet in Frankfurt at the KSBA offices. And we have, actually, we have two little days right before the KSBA meeting later this week. That's, that'll be in Louisville at the Gold House. And so, this year, if he's missing from the district, chances are, he's with me. Next year, if he misses seventeen days, you better look for him. He's not. I don't think he will, but honestly, he has, he has represented you well. We have a, I arrange the seating arrangements and I change them around every meeting. So, at one meeting, he may be seated next to Findwell Independence New Superintendent, and the next one, he may be seated next to Jefferson County New Superintendent. And so, he's picking the brains of superintendents from all across the state and they're picking his. And I can tell you, when he speaks at those meetings, he is well respected and you are well represented. So, from my perspective, everything's going really well. If you feel otherwise, certainly let me know. But I'll look forward to coming back again in late May, early June for the capstone presentation. And then hopefully, he'll complete the new superintendent training and next year will be much easier in terms of him having to be out of the district so much. Because I know it's difficult that first year, especially with all these requirements. But people ask me from time to time why there's not as many people applying for superintendent positions. And I can tell you, we've had some recently named and there have been only two or three applicants who would apply for those positions. And the reason, when I was a superintendent, there was more money. There were not the, not the stresses related to evaluation and, and rating the district based on testing and that kind of thing. That's all getting tighter and tighter and harder and harder. So, it's, it's a job that is a really hard job. When I was a high school principal, I thought that was the hardest job in education. And I still kinda think it is because you gotta make some decisions every day, some split decisions. And superintendent has to make more important decisions, but they have more time usually to put those together and they can ask board members and central office people and other people their opinions before they render that decision. But it still is a very difficult job. So, again, if you, if you get a good one, hang on to them and support them. And the success of the district, there's a very high correlation between school board and school superintendent relationships. And if you're pulling together, paddling both in the same direction, obviously, you're gonna be successful. So, good things going on here. My hat's off to you and I look forward to continuing to see good things coming from Johnson County.
Thank you. Dr. Carter. Next, you have the superintendent's personnel report. And please keep in mind, the next meeting is going to be March twenty-sixth at Flat Gap School. So, hope to see you all out there. Mr. Cochran.